All right, I think we can get ready to get started here at our study session. At this time, I don't think we even need a roll call. Google? No. Yeah. Very good. So we will start with the staff's presentation and our deputy city manager and city manager, Maka and Alex, please.
Yeah, if I could just thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank the council for making the time to have a study session on this item. We're very close and excited about moving this project forward. So very interested in your input today so that we can continue the process and continue to move this forward. And again, really wanted to thank you for making the talk because I know it's an additional factor that you have. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I was going to be the deputy city manager. I have the fun job of introducing the MacDutra Plaza project, final project design for you guys this evening. I'm just going to quickly, just to give you a quick agenda, I'm going to go over just the process of where we are at, how we came here today at this point. And then I'm going to pass it over to Tom Conroy and Steve Kuciu, Kuciu Kinkle, to go ahead and walk you guys through the design overall. And then thereafter, I'm happy to answer any questions I have. Stephen Tom will be as well.
The turf council will land here pretty soon.
So just a little bit of background. So the current park of its stands was originally built and dedicated in 1982. This was spearheaded by the beautification committee along with about 20 other community organizations. The, so bringing it to today, back in October of 2013, the beautification committee approached the city about doing a revival of MacDutra Park and opening it up a little bit. And with that, we had a special joint recreation committee and city council meeting back on December 17th, almost a year ago, to talk further about moving forward with this project. And the city council and recreation committee gave their input and approval to move forward with this project. The city went ahead and in June retained Kuciu Kinkle Design Group to go ahead and put together design documents of what you have today in front of you. The main goal was to revive the plaza in the heart of downtown, the corner of Kelly and Main Street. Also, a great gesture of the beautification committee was to give $100,000 donation for the construction aspect of the project. In your packet tonight is a resolution between the city and the beautification committee that if approved, we'll execute that and the city will have $100,000 going to this project. So city staff along with our retained architects did quite a little, quite a bit of public participation. There were over eight opportunities for public participation on this project, including that joint meeting that we talked about a little earlier. The project went in front of the recreation committee in January. It went in front of the Main Street business groups with the Business Roundtable back in June. It also went to the Realtors for input, and that was in June as well. Then there was a community meeting held at the EOC right across the way. Then it went to the planning commission back on August 26th. Then we had a farmer's market booth where we publicized the project as well. And then our biggest, I guess our big, one of our big exposures was about two weeks ago on November 9th, the Concerts in the Park thrown by the Parks and Rec Committee, which I have three committee members here tonight. So I thank you guys for showing up. And with that, you kind of could see where the vision was going for this park. And there's some pictures included in your packet as well, so you can kind of see what's going on there with the current park and what could be visioned with the new design. And then that brings us here tonight to the city council to talk more about the final design and hopefully getting final design approval and direction from you guys. In this process, city staff also met with adjacent neighbors because we want to be good neighbors. So we met with Diane Chapman over there at 508 Main Street with Peskidero too. And we also met with Lois Brown, the building owner of the laundry building. And I forget the name of that old, the historic building over there. Maybe Marina knows it. But we met with that property owner as well. And they both have pledged their support for this project. So that was really good. So project funding. The estimated total project cost that we have right now is $443,636. This might change a little bit depending on with the beautification committee's $100,000 donation. There is also in-kind service donations of construction services, and that could include the demolition of the current facility out there. So that would be a reduced cost savings. So there's $200,000 coming, the budget coming from the Park and Lou fee from the city. There's $100,000 from the beautification committee. There's $100,000 from your March 18th meeting with surplus funds. And then there's about $75,000 budgeted towards new roofing and roof repairs and a couple of other things over there. So projected project timeline. So we're looking at if the council approves the final design this evening, we'd be doing some construction bid distribution, collection and valuation between December and January. We'd like to come to council if we're on the fast track, January 20th, but it could be February 3rd. So we have a little room over there. And then we would hope to commence construction March 1st. It would last about four months. And we'd look at a June 30th completion of the project and then hopefully a dedication and ribbon cutting on July 4th. So this concludes my part of the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and pass it on over to Tom Conroy, I believe, with Kuciu Kinkle Design Group.
Actually, Alex, can you hit me with those dates one more time? The construction start date and end date?
Okay, so March 1st start date and project completion date of June 30th. So that's a four-month period. Could be faster, but right now we want to give ourselves a little bit of cushion. And I'd remiss not to go ahead and let you know that Bev Ashcroft and Cameron Palmer from the beautification committee are also with us this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. As most of you all know, my name is Tom Conroy, and I am currently serving as the chair of the planning commission. But it's important to make it clear that I am here tonight on behalf of my employer, not on behalf of the planning commission or at the behest of the city. As Alex said, I am here tonight because the city hired our firm last June to draft the construction drawings and to provide construction administration services for the renovation of MacDutra Plaza. It was about a year ago that I stood before you and we went over the, our initial first pass concept of MacDutra Plaza, which was the product at that point of about a year's worth of meetings and design surets with beautification. And our office was happy to donate that time to work with beautification on the challenge of renovating MacDutra. Most of us are lucky to live and work in town, and we're familiar with the current state of MacDutra from walking to school or to the coffee shop and whatnot. Now, as landscape architects, our training and our experience informs us what a tremendous impact a successful public space can have in the heart of a community. And what's really been instructive to us over the last two years working on this project is that in all the public and private meetings we've had, no one's ever asked us why. It seems like the, the need for an updated functional community space right at the heart of our downtown is, is understood across, across the city. And we hope that the outstanding success of the Concert in the Park Sunday before last inspired and excited the community for what a, what a fully renovated plaza will look like. Now, I don't want to spend too much time dwelling on existing conditions. I think we covered that pretty well over at our last meeting a year ago. But I want to briefly touch on what we felt were the, the main site constraints that needed to be addressed. Number one, it's dark. Some of that can't be helped. There's a tall building to the west. There's a 12-foot tall building to the south. But it has a relatively heavy interior tree canopy that shades the site and further contributes to its lack of openness. Staff has also shared with us recently the difficulties that neighboring property owners have been having with some of those trees and the roots getting into the storm drain or even the sanitary sewer. A second issue with the park is visibility, and that's both into and out of the park. Those tall planter walls along Kelly and the bell tower kiosk right at the corner isolate the park from the sidewalk. And that lack of transparency serves to make the, the park feel unwelcoming. And at the concert, Steve and I stood there watching the band, and there was a woman and her companion came up, and the woman was in a wheelchair. And she, she got right in front, or on the backside of one of those walls and kind of, you know, leaned up and pushed her way over to get a view. And it was just, it, it struck me because throughout this whole process, it never occurred to us how, how even at that level, that visibility into the park is really lacking right now. The other issue with, with the design of the park is its connection to the street or the lack thereof, because the, those tall walls, they prevent pedestrians from seeing around corners or before entering the plaza. And in the two years we've been working on this project, anecdotes abound from members of the public who have noted to us how uncomfortable they felt entering the park. Finally, the dated aesthetics are a bit of a concern. And this is also an issue of visibility because the, the public plaza in our downtown projects to visitors a sense of our community. And if this public plaza at Kelly and Main appears rundown, is underutilized, it projects an image that isn't really fair, and I don't think really is appropriate for Happin Bay. So here are, just want to refresh everybody's memory of what our design goals were. It's one of the first tasks we tackled with beautification is figuring out what these design goals were. And we've identified four items that we thought would help transform the space. Number one is openness and light, kind of removing those visual obstructions, remove the walls, thin out the tree canopy to let light and air circulate through the site. The second one is trying to improve the connection to Main Street, which, which can, can happen by removing those, those obstructions, those walls and the bell tower that kind of anchors the site to Main Street and acts as a draw. With a strong connection to Main and Kelly, the actual borders, the actual property lines kind of disappear, and the site expands out into the sidewalk and into the surrounding corner. Also, their connection to the community. Notwithstanding our recent Concert in the Park, civic use of MacDutra is relatively rare. And so providing space and amenities for civic or community events will further the anchor aspect of a revitalized downtown space. And finally, one of the biggest obstacles to a successful public space is heavy maintenance requirements. Where a well-maintained site will thrive for years, a neglected space becomes uninviting rather quickly. And as the maintenance lapses, the degeneration accelerates. And so our goal with this redesign was to provide an open, welcoming public space that will last for years without burdening the city with an overwhelming set of maintenance requirements. So in that respect, the goal of sustainability is not just to check off a buzzword, but it's a practical solution to ensure the long-term success of a redesigned plaza. But notwithstanding that caveat, we have included a number of features that serve to lighten the environmental footprint of the site, and we'll highlight those as, as we go through the project. And so we present to you the refined concept plan for MacDutra Plaza. Now, while this is largely similar to the initial concept that we shared last December, public input and feedback from the planning commission shaped several aspects of the layout. And I'll, I'll highlight those as, as we go through the points. So by removing the tall walls that are existing there and removing the raised planters, and by selectively removing those portions of the tree canopy, and by removing the bell tower, those things which so impacted the visibility and connection to the sidewalk and to Main Street begin to disappear, and the, the overall feel of the plaza expands beyond its 3,800 square foot footprint or so. Also, flowing paving patterns and planting areas stretch into and across the adjacent sidewalk that further serves to obscure the actual physical boundary of the park. So as soon as you pass the laundromat or across the street from City Hall, you get the feeling that you're already inside the plaza. You're no longer pinched between a tall wall and a city street. So our intent was that the bulk of the plaza, shown in the reddish color, be paved with permeable unit pavers. Now, currently, the site is paved entirely in concrete. So that means that every drop of rainwater that falls on that site rolls across the paving, down into the curb, and almost directly into the city storm drain system. So rainwater, the little rainwater that we have, never has a chance to stay on-site or recharge into our local groundwater. It just goes off into the storm drain and ends up in the ocean. This approach is not only out of compliance with current stormwater codes, but it's just bad environmental practice. Furthermore, one of the defining aspects that you can see here is the, what we're calling this beach paving band. This is kind of an undulating ribbon that evokes the dunes or the waves or the coastal hills around us. It weaves across the site. You can see it starts in and stretches out across the, where the sidewalk is now, and comes back in and comes back out. And it's kind of facilitates interaction just by people walking across it, passersby, kind of become part of the dynamic, part of the rhythm of the site. Our intent was that this feature be made out of integrity-colored polished porous concrete. And so what this will, will give us, you can see, I guess it's a little blurry. I mean, you might have a, have a better image in your, in your packet there. But what it is, it's porous concrete. Water will percolate right through and, and will recharge into the, into the ground right there. It is a stable, it is a level surface, it can take vehicular traffic if it needed to. But it gives us a slight, slightly more environmentally friendly design impact right on the site. So those, those design aspects do a lot to connect the plaza physically to Kelly and Main. But as we mentioned earlier, a strong community connection is really important. It's one of our goals. So while our original design concept located bike racks along Kelly Street, public feedback and feedback from the planning commission directed us to add more. And so now we show enough bike parking for at least 16 bikes along Kelly and Main, as well as in the plaza itself, kind of on the northwest corner, at the corner of the laundry building right there. In addition, we are also showing a dedicated space up against the laundry building to relocate the existing school bell from atop the bell tower, as well as the MacDutra memorial plaque in the planter along the west side of the plaza right there. Now, one of the items that beautification committee strongly supported, in fact, it was probably the driver of the project, was the concept of a small stage in the plaza. Now, whether this is for more concerts in the park, or civic events, or eight-year-old impromptu dance parties on the stage, it, the, the stage and the trails above it will act really as a, as a focal anchor to the site that will visually draw interest from, from across the street or even down the street. Now, the lines that you see radiating from the plaza, I guess they're a little faded in the picture right there, are rope lights, LED rope lights that connect to a arc of column lights that you can see in the picture right there. Those, those light columns follow the beach paving band and kind of reinforce that rhythm, those curves in, in a different plane, but also provide kind of a broader lighting amphitheater. So you kind of get this amphitheater of light that focuses on, on the So you kind of get this amphitheater of light that focuses on the stage. It may not be appropriate for every Tuesday night in MacDutra, but certainly for civic events that stretch into the evening, it'll be a really, really neat effect. Closer to the entrance of the park at the corner of Kelly and Main is a new public fountain. It was imperative that the fountain be practical, befitting its size and location. And the fountain concept itself is relatively simple. There is an upper bowl, a little bubbler in an upper bowl that spills into a lower basin. The lower basin also provides some additional permanent seating. The fountain is designed to completely drain when it's switched off, so it kind of eliminates any of the issues associated with standing water. Now, should the construction or long-term maintenance of the fountain be deemed impractical? A nicely detailed planter, potentially with seasonal flower color turnover, would be a great alternative. Now, behind the fountain is the ideal location for an informational sign, which is another community-focused site. Our concept for this sign was that it be semi-transparent and include a downtown or a points of interest map, a community bulletin board, a civic calendar, or other such uses. And one material you can see up on the presentation and also on the second page of your packet is a laminated acrylic resin. And what this is, this is a multi-layer material into which maps or text can be sealed between layers of graffiti and vandal-proof acrylic. So you can see in the sample images, the format is highly customizable. You can see the one on the left is an old city map of San Francisco. The one in the middle center there shows, I can't remember, they're images, they're photographs. But they're semi-transparent, so if you're standing in front of it, you may still be able to see the stage through, or if you're on the other side, you may still be able to see out. But the map or the design aspect is safely contained. And finally, with the cooperation of the adjacent building owners, ample space exists to cover the walls, the bare unrelevated block walls to the south, at some point in the future, with a mural or a series of murals that could further serve to liven up this corner and to maximize the civic potential that MacDutra Plaza offers. And in fact, a mural or some other form of suspended artwork along that south wall was one of the great unrealized concepts from the original 1979 design drawings. Finally, sustainability. As we noted earlier, one of our main goals was to provide a design that isn't dependent on heavy, long-term maintenance for its success. We haven't included a whole lot of planning areas in this design, and that's intentional. Our concept is that MacDutra be reinvented as an urban plaza, not necessarily a rehabilitated public park and the associated maintenance requirements that come with a public park. Instead, the planning areas are generally off to the sides and are used to soften the building facades and to help direct traffic in towards the center of the park. And just as a final note, we are aware that there may be some perceived incongruity with sustainable design practices and our proposal to remove some of these trees. And we are sensitive to that. I mean, as landscape architects, our foremost duty is stewardship to the land. And it was up until recently that we had intended to save the two trees that are up against the laundry building. But their sudden decline, as is noted in the Arbus Report, has really kind of forced our hand and required the removal. I think the one furthest to the north is dead or almost dead. So in replacing these trees, and in order to avoid any further nuisance with sidewalk uplifting and things like that, our intent is that all of these trees be planted with in a medium called structural soil. And what that is, is an engineered medium, growing medium, that provides a stable, compactable base that will support adjacent paving, but it contains voids within its matrix that allows for water and air to reach the tree roots. And so they're not going to be pushing up against the sidewalk, they're able to grow down and grow away from the sidewalk. And most cities in the Bay Area, or many cities, already require structural soil as a street tree planting medium, and it just seems to be good practice for us going forward. Furthermore, all new trees are to be planted in tree grates that are flush with the adjacent sidewalk, that protects the crown of the tree and kind of expands the sidewalk space. And so it will avoid some of those tripping hazards and messy piles of mulch and rounded crowns of trees that we see elsewhere on Main Street. Finally, we really appreciate the opportunity that the Beautification Committee offered, have provided us in working towards this final design right now, and we appreciate the opportunity to share it with the council tonight. Available for any questions.
Thank you, Tom, for the excellent presentation. Council members, we do have a card at this moment, but you're more than welcome to ask questions of the presenter. Yes.
We do have some questions for the council.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Walter.
Hi, Tom. A couple of questions for you. I know you mentioned using permeable pavers for the red area.
Yes.
And I'm just curious of that selection as opposed to a stamped concrete kind of thing. I'm just thinking about maintenance and long-term viability. Does that, do they have a similar useful life as to something like a stamped concrete or something that might achieve a similar effect?
Well, they, no, they really don't. I mean, a stamped concrete is impermeable, for one, which was kind of one of our goals is to let the groundwater recharge into the site. Stamped concrete will have a higher initial maintenance or initial installation cost, too. And one of the difficulties with using a stamped colored concrete in, or any colored concrete, in a public space is that it's really difficult to match. If, let's say, the sewer line leading from the bathrooms blows up and it needs to be replaced, or something has to happen that requires getting to something down below, it's a lot easier to remove unit pavers, get what you need to do, replace those unit pavers, than it is to patch in colored and stamped concrete.
So the choice, is special maintenance required for pavers?
No.
No?
No. I mean, as long as, really, as long as they're set well initially.
So are they free-floating in sand, or are they set in a...
What there's, the way permeable pavers work is that they're set on three different grades of fine gravel, and then they're filled in with gravel on the top. So it's a lock and gravel that, it's almost like sitting them on base rock, but it's just permeable, lets the waters go through.
I got it. So where I'm coming from, and totally, I'm okay with it, but where I'm coming from is I just had some previous experience with pavers of this kind and ended a different type of climate, so over a course of a few seasons, there became small tripasses and some floated higher and lower in the change. Would you expect that to be an issue in our climate with the pavers in Hefum Bay?
I doubt it with the climate. We're not, you know, subject to freeze thaw cycles. It seems that if the base is prepared well, there's less danger of that happening with settlement over time. The base that we're proposing for these is 10 inches, eight to 10 inches thick, which is much, much more substantial than a typical four to six inch base. And what that does is that allows us the extra void space in the rock matrix to allow that water to slowly percolate through, rather than just sitting on the native soil.
Gotcha. So I'd just say I'm a little concerned about the pavers, but maybe that's the unknown. I trust your expertise on that. And my second question was around the semi-transparent sign, and you referenced that, you know, if you could put something between there, signs between there, then it's protected from graffiti and whatnot. Is there some sort of coating, or in what way is it protected from graffiti?
There's a couple of things. It's protected from paint on graffiti with a coating. That's part of the laminate. But the acrylic material itself is scratch resistant, so, you know, etching with a key or a knife is really difficult to do. I mean, this stuff is really hard and really dense.
Great. And my last question is about the trees. So we have a net loss of trees, and I'm assuming that we will make it have a net, a similar net gain of trees somewhere else? That's the plan for that?
Oh, defer to Alex for that.
So there's a net loss of four trees, and the plans with the city is to go ahead and plant four trees somewhere else on city property within the city limits.
Thank you.
We haven't decided yet, but we'll talk to our public works team.
Questions or comments from the council? Okay, our first one would be Mr. Cobleson, John Cobleson, please. And I don't know if anyone else would like to comment.
Good evening, council. Thanks to Tom and Steve for doing a great job on this. Friends of Hefum Bay Parks and Rec has donated, or we've budgeted for $10,000 for a fountain to go into this park. And I'd like to address that fountain for a while, because I know there's some concern about maintenance of it. I think, design-wise, we might be able to help out, as well as how to care for it in a reasonably affordable manner. First, a fountain adds a lot of charm. People come to our community, and we enjoy this community a lot because of water, and to have a park that doesn't have water when it's originally planned that way, I'd really like to see it happen. It's child-friendly, at least the one that we have in mind. And I would propose a slight change to what's on the design here. There are fountains that are in-ground, draining fountains, so there would only be some water coming up at the top. Everything would drain right down into pavers, some bricks, something like that. I'm envisioning about 50 gallons, which would maintain, which would have to be filled occasionally, like any other fountain would. But it would not be such a hazard for kids to go splashing in or throw things in, or throwing bubble bath in or whatever. It would disappear into the ground, yet it would be charming. It would be, there'd be some water on the surface, kids could get their hands wet or whatever. And I like the circular design and adding some seating. All we would have to do is maybe have three or four openings to get into that area. Also, I think between Friends of Hefum Bay Park and Rec and La Pati Belene, we have four certified pool operators. So if you're really concerned about how much it's going to cost, I think we can probably help out there. The Beautification Committee might be able to come up with a little support if the city cannot afford whatever the minimal expense is to take care of a small fountain like I'm envisioning. In fact, if it's small enough, we might even have money left over from our $10,000 to contribute toward that from the get-go. Anyway, the worst-case scenario, let's say the fountain stops working, I would hope that the fountain would be attractive enough to where it would look just fine as a sculpture. And if you decide not to put a fountain in, we're still in support of putting a fountain, supporting and funding a sculpture at that site. Thanks. Oh, by the way, I have a second home in the mountains, 4,300 feet, pavers, no problem with tripping whatsoever. I think it's all about the work that's done underneath. It's been 11 years, snow, rain, 90 degrees. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, the president of Beautification, Cameron Palmer, please.
Hi, Cameron Palmer. Good evening to you. First of all, I want to start by saying that Steve Cucucci and Tom Conroy have been a pleasure to work with. It's been a couple of years now. They've sat through many of our pumpkin festival meetings and had to answer a lot of questions. And you guys are great for the community, and thank you for doing this. I also want to thank my fellow board members, I have a couple of them here, Bev Ashkraft and Chris Mason as well. So as you know, we've pledged $100,000 towards this project. We think it's a great project, it's time to give this place a facelift, the corner a facelift. We just had the Concerts in the Park series, I think most of you know that, and it was very well attended. But I got to tell you, the little comment that was made about the wall, I feel like Reagan's saying, knock down that wall, because everyone was on the outskirts of the wall trying to get in. Granted, there were a lot of people inside, too, but it does seem like it's a deterrent for attracting people into the park. Also, I really like the stage concept that's been drawn. During the recent Concerts in the Park, we put the stage there on purpose to practice, if you will, and it works. You can see the stage from every inch of the park. You can also see it from Main Street, so it draws you into the park. I think the stage is going to be an important thing for different civic things that occur over the next 20, 30 years here. Night of Lights, special civic presentations can take place right up on the stage as well. That's pretty much all I have for now. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Cameron, and the rest of your board. Sarah Zagi, please.
Hello, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you, Alex, for your help. I have my committee members here, Marsha and John. We've been really lucky enough to be able to implement the Adopt a Park program after we had a joint council session with you, and it's been really successful. I think this is a great collaboration and what's come out of it. And when we did have the recent concert series, one thing that was really consistently came up, even before the concert series, was that people really would like us to develop a space for them to gather, and especially the artists, especially the performers, musicians. And I've even heard stuff of, you know, maybe make this available for us every Sunday or one or two Sundays a month, that we know what timeframe we can be here, and we're going to come and create music, create art right here. And we would really love it if we could create that space for them. And we've been very fortunate to be able to have this group of people to work with, and especially with Steve and Tom and everything that they put together. So if you have any questions for us, I know that our committee, as Alex has said, has been working with the Beautification Committee for the last year, and we've gone through it. And as the chair of your Parks and Rec Committee, it's really our recommendation that we move forward with this to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Final card, John Olin, please.
Thank you. One of the charming things I used to find about that park is there were usually a lot of elderly gentlemen there during weekdays, playing board games, stuff like that. And I noticed in the, real reading the agenda last night, that there seemed to be a plan to remove the tables that are out there and store them when not in use. So I'm just curious if there's a plan to leave table space out there during the weekdays so that the people who are currently using the park during weekdays can continue to use the park the way that they like to use it? Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes the cards at this time. Bring it back to the council for any comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Definitely want to thank Beautification Committee, because you really jump-started this. Without your contribution, we would not even be talking about this, so thank you. And I think this is time for a new iteration of this park to be updated. It served its purpose before, and it was designed the way it was for different reasons, with different people contributing, and now we're in another phase of it, so it's getting refreshed, so people could utilize this much better. To Steve and Tom, thank you. I think this is, you've come up with a really great plan, I know you've gotten input from several people, but I do like the openness and the airiness of the whole feeling. I was at the Concerts in the Park last week, and people were restricted by the wall, but just seeing the people there, I think we could do more of that. It doesn't have to be as grand as the event was last week, it could be solo people, it could just be new uses for this. And what I do know, I'm in favor of a fountain, but not something that's small and has... And what I do know, I'm in favor of a fountain, but not something that's small and has individual pieces that you could break off. I know many, many years ago, we had the bubble blower and that sat back in the park. And people want to touch it, but it was broken and there was a lot of issues with that. You know, I think a fountain that is just basic, something that, you know, if a kid wants to climb in it and get wet, that's, you know, that happens. Kids enjoy water. But as long as we can turn it off at night and drain it so the masked bandits of Main Street at 10 o'clock at night don't go in there and drink the water. And I like the fountain because I've found that when I travel, even in old European countries, they're always in a plaza, there's a fountain. And they date back a long time. And I find myself gravitating to it, to sit down and look. And it's not intentional, but I just go there. And the same with if I'm traveling anywhere in the States. You tend to sit down and just the sound of a fountain is very soothing. It has that calming gurgling sound to it. And it really drowns out and brings a little nature to really an urban environment. So I'm in favor of some type of fountain as long as it doesn't have like all kinds of small moving parts. Maybe it's just something very basic. And I'm glad to see that Parks and Rec has thought of different things in the way to fund it. And there might be opportunities for sponsorship for ongoing maintenance. Because that is a concern, but I think it's not insurmountable.
Thank you. Councilmember Patrick?
Excuse me, I have this cold. My concern is the fountain, number one, when I looked at the project. And my concern is I think a fountain is great, but I think if we could have a different type of fountain, not this type of fountain, basically because it's going to become a garbage pit unless somebody's there constantly maintaining it. It's too wide open and people sit there. And you know, when you sit and drink, where does the garbage go? Into the fountain. Because people don't tend to respect things that they're sitting around. And unless we do something to prevent that, and I agree with Marina, the nighttime bandits would be out there using it as a bathtub also. And I am concerned about the fountain maintenance because Punkin Festival, Main Street Beautification is the adoptee of that park. So does that mean the adoptee is responsible for the maintaining of the fountain? Because I'm not sure that the Punkin Festival Committee has that kind of money to put out every year. So that's my number-one concern about maintenance, unless the city does it or Friends of Parks and Recreation. The trees that are planted along, I, you know, we're talking about maintaining trees and sidewalks and all that. So I'm not against trees having to be removed for those instances that, you know, when it becomes a safety thing. And also going into people's properties as far as sidewalks and sewer lines, I think they need to be removed and replaced, but they definitely should be replaced. So, and then the pavers, I have the same concern as Rick, but John kind of like settled that kind of concern if he definitely has it and if it's really compacted. Because so many times you see the pavers and me out there doing maintenance on the softball field, if they're not done right, you're out there weeding even the pavers. So I just want to make sure that when that's done, that we're not trying to pull the weeds out of those pavers.
Councilman Alafano?
Thank you. Excuse me. I pretty much agree with everything that's been said. I also feel that I have mixed emotions about a fountain. I'm very concerned that if we don't take good care of it, it could become an eyesore in a really pretty new park. So I think if the fountain is something that doesn't have a big catch basin of water below, there's water flowing, but there's not a place for people to put cigarette butts or bottles or who knows what, but you do hear the gurgling and so forth, and it's not a big maintenance item, I think it could be okay. As a matter of fact, looking at the new bench you've added, I mean, I would have liked to seen another bench right there. I think that's a very attractive feature. I think it could go either way. But the fact that we're keeping this open so there's good visual, I think, no matter what, it's a step in the right direction. And worst-case, I mean, with pavers, if there ever is issues, they're not impossible to repair. They are something you can take out and you can fix. If concrete cracks later, you've got a pretty big mess on your hands. But again, I think it's important that whatever, if we go with the fountain, it's something really simple, kid-proof, vandal-proof, and doesn't become a maintenance issue.
Councilman Walczek?
I've got more. So, never a surprise, right? So just, to my understanding, my understanding is we do not currently have a trash problem in Mac Dutra Park. Is that the case? Is it typical?
So, it is taken care of on a weekly basis, so you kind of don't see that. At the end of the weekend, sometimes you might see a little bit of trash, but that's cleaned up by our public works.
Got it, okay. So a fountain of some sort, that would be a collector, it could be an issue. I understand, that's a good point. So I think it's important that at that position in the park that we have something noteworthy that's iconic for the park. If it's not there, it's incredibly bland. And I like the idea a lot of a fountain. I think Naomi brings up a great point, that we have a relationship for Adopt a Park. And I don't think it was our expectation that we put an extra burden on beautification committee if there is a fountain. But that is something I think we should discuss, if there's some part of that they're willing to consider. But I think that would end up becoming a city thing, in my determination. But regarding the fountain, and Magda, this is sort of for you, for all of us, for your input regarding the fountain. That, in a lot of respects, is much like any sort of public art, right? If there's a sculpture or structure there. And I previously shared with the city manager information about how to get this process to follow when you embrace or accept a new piece of public art, even if it's a piece of public art that we're sponsoring. Which means that any fountain we want to put in, we should put and say, oh, you know, someone's going to love it, someone's going to hate it. That's the way art works. We should have, I think, maybe not decide on the fountain tonight because I don't think we know enough about it. But if we can agree in concept that we want a fountain that is low-maintenance, is not prone to becoming a trash receptacle, and we do some investigation on that, and then perhaps follow this process, we can perhaps look into this process I've shared with you, where the county arts commission would present some principles, something forward, bring something forward and help us make a decision on that. Is that something we'd be open to?
Thank you for your comments. A question. Would staff like to respond to that question?
Yeah. So I think what I'm hearing is that we want, council is interested in having a fountain that is low-maintenance, child-proof, graffiti-proof, garbage-proof, and beautiful. And iconic.
I haven't had my comments yet.
We can, I think that with those, with that direction, presuming that's the case for that direction, we can look into it. I'm a little bit concerned about delaying if we come back with it as a piece of art. And if the committee comes up with something that's terribly different in terms of the infrastructure that needs to be built to support that fountain, then it may delay the process. Presuming that's the consensus, we can go with that. I don't know what we'll find, but I think that we, in a little bit, so I think we've heard the input as best possible, with none of us really knowing what that looks like. But I think we can try and find something for that.
Thank you. And I think that's great. I'm comfortable with that. My last thing is for architects, and I don't know if anything needs to happen in this regard, but is there any infrastructure or any part of this that, if we want to, I know very early on, it was important to be that we provide public Wi-Fi in the park. Is there any infrastructure we need to put in place at this stage of construction to facilitate that? Or is that always after the fact?
I think that it depends on what sort of infrastructure that you want. I think we've made accommodations, or are planning to make accommodations for additional outlets and additional circuits throughout the park. I don't know what the requirements, how robust the requirements are for adding a public Wi-Fi station. But since the entire area is going to be torn up, it's really easy to just add another conduit or two to route things to whatever location is decided by the city.
Thank you. That still remains a priority for me in the park. That's all my comments, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I'll try to summarize here quickly. Number one, why? I think the timing is right for why. We can clear that up right away. Number two, I think your Main Street has to be inviting. And our Main Street has started to look like it's inviting. And I think if we can get this park constructed, it will just be the crown jewel of our Main Street, to have it inviting and comfortable. I think water is very comforting also, just the sound of water. A fountain of some sort is very, very important, in my opinion, in a park. If you look at most parks, that is where the gathering is around, some type of fountain, some kind of water. I think it's very important for that. The seating for benches is very, very important. I'd like to see, as a commenter mentioned, some maybe small tables. We don't want to have a table for 12 there because it'll be small but yet inviting. So maybe there's some way we could put together a couple smaller tables in that construction. So I think, I believe we're pretty firm on moving forward. Possibly we could get some credits also for the bike racks along the way from different organizations in the county because the number of bike racks that you're installing now, there are credits available for that, I believe. And so, I think that's a good, yeah, okay. So these are some of the things we have to look at. But I'm definitely in favor of moving this forward and thanking beautification committee. I know we all sacrifice and there's a lot of people that make not nice comments of the traffic time and the busy time, but let me tell you, they give back to the community very generously. And I think it's very important that giving a Main Street park would be just a real vital link to our Main Street with the beautiful lighting we've got going on there. So I'm in favor of moving forward on this.
So can you guys formally adopt the resolution with beautification committee for the donation and then just approve the design? And we have information for the fountain, does that work for the group?
Correct. I think we could have an addendum to it there. And then, Councilman Patrick, would you like to make the motion, please?
Absolutely. Approve the, excuse me, Mac Dutra Plaza final design and adopt resolution, accept $100,000 donation from the Haven Bay Beautification Committee and also looking at the fountain design.
Second.
Moving to second. Any further comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So order five votes. And now we will close the study session and get ready here in a couple minutes to convene the regular meeting.
... Black things were back. We often had things that are like, there's like, bodies like this.
What did you do to get disciplined?
It's being broadcast live online right now. And then, can you go like, no wait later? Yeah. And then it's, meeting's done, video, you know, go to citizenacts.gov and there'll be a link on the first page, the title of the day.
You don't know, okay. So we have, we have... Yes, okay. So that's the ordinance at the end of the night. Okay. That's, I just want to check because it's not just about Kino Ditter's. So I want to make sure you aren't doing a public comment on Kino Ditter's. You know what, you're talking about the ordinance that I introduced. Yeah. Adam, he knows all the stories. Guess what I found? He could... But I noticed, it was...
I'd like to get everyone settled down here, please. Yeah, we got a couple, three, four minutes till our camera.
Oh, he does a lot of the typing. Very terrible.
You probably should get off. I don't have any teeth. I mean, just face it, man. I'm giving your brother shit. I was giving your brother shit because he's getting off his feet from you posting.
He helps you with the typing.
You guys gotta get your stars turned.
No, I just... I hate to talk about anything I wanted to, but I have to keep this low. Even his band, this is great.
Don't tell Plainville. I think they probably agree with that.
He just cut off every IP address.
But you can't do that. Because if you, if somebody's on a dynamic network, right? And you've got ATT and you're in CanadaCo. You know what a proxy server is, right?
Yes.
It's like, I don't even have time for that BS. I can't believe you guys...
What I do, like, I sit around a corner for eight hours a day waiting for something to break. You know, since I do my job pretty good, nothing breaks.
You know what I did when I was your age? That's my point. Is I had three jobs, and I would actually do them all at the same time, right? So if I'm sitting there waiting for stuff to break, take on proposals and start doing other jobs. They'd have to go to the back.
When you're doing that, you'll go four days with nothing happen, and then on day five, all of your festivals will have something break.
Yeah, and that's where you hire one.
That was always my problem.
Could do that.
People been up to 10 and 12, we have, they come.
You're trying to explain this to me?
Maybe you just say baby service to one.
And she runs. But you gotta get good people. You really do. That's the thing.
Really to get themselves out of their lives by, and they get good jobs out there. And they're just as lazy as hell. They just screw along as much as everybody else does at all the same.
That's, that's the generalized part. You really gotta find that here.
It is the hardest part. In that industry, you can crank out $10,000 worth of profit in two hours when they get around to it. It might take them six hours to crank up themselves up to do that, but they end up making their money for the company. Obviously, they do because the guys are flying corporate jets and don't work on weekends like I end up doing sometimes. So they must know something. The PC TV guy.
Yeah.
He gets closer and closer. They keep pushing these roles back.
Are they pushing you guys out?
They're trying their best.
Good evening.
Do you want me to sit with the tea lady?
It's a conspiracy.
Welcome to our November City Council meeting here. At this time, we've convened a meeting and have roll call vote, please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here. This time, pledge of allegiance, please. They roll away on us here. So at this time, we have some proclamations and presentations. And the first one, very special evening, we have our neighbor mayor from Pacifica, Maryann Nyheart, who's just been a huge supporter of San Mateo County and the coast side. And we don't get her to our meeting very often, but she's jumped out of a meeting to be here for us. And she works very hard in her private life for all of us veterans in America too, Maryann. So thank you for your dedication to all of us. Now, we don't get too many chances to say nice things about you. So, and you support Farmers Market in Pacifica also. So go for it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thanks, God. I'm Mayor Muller. I'm sorry. I forgot where I was. Mayor Muller?
What about the Farmer John thing?
Yeah, well, what can I say? Anyway, good evening, council members. Mayor Muller, I am here, and for the public, to express our appreciation and to say goodbye to somebody that I know has one more meeting, but unfortunately, we do our reorganization about the time you're doing your reorganization, so we can't be here. So I'm coming a little bit early. And this is Naomi Patrick. Councilmember Patrick, you have been a champion for the coast. I cannot say how much of an honor it has been to serve you, to serve with you. And as a result, I wanted to come and present to you a little recognition from our city. So if you don't mind, Naomi Patrick has served as a member of the Half Moon Bay City Council from 1985 to 2001. Our city clerks got together, so I know all these things. Seven terms as mayor, and again from 2005 to 2014, serving two terms as mayor. I can't even begin to list all the appointments and elected offices that you have served in, from the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, LAFCO Commission, the San Mateo County Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, congestion management, an environmental quality committee, the San Francisco Community Airport Roundtable, the San Mateo County Airport Land Use Committee, the Criminal Justice Council, the Regional Planning Commission. I read all of these, and there's more, mainly because there's so much more to being a council member than these meetings. The representation you put forward for your city is absolutely outstanding. Whereas Naomi is also volunteering her time to many civic and local organizations. Half Moon Bay Girls Softball League, the Pumpkin Festival, needless to say, that's the envy of lots of people. The Portuguese Cultural Center, the Cabrillo. You've been a charter member for SCEA. You also were in Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce, the Boys and Girls Clubs, the list goes on there as well. Naomi, your unique sensitivity for doing what is best for the entire community has earned the admiration in high regard of other civic leaders and area residents. And whereas there is one characteristic that distinguishes you, I can think of many, but you are truly a public servant, and it's your enormous capacity for hard work and your deep and genuine love of your community and the surrounding area. You've been a true friend on the coast. So I, Maryann Nyheart, as mayor of Pacifica, and on behalf of the entire City Council of Pacifica, express our sincere appreciation for your leadership, your dedication, your understanding, your perseverance, and your real collegiality in your service to your community and the manner in which you've carried out those duties. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next, moving on to our Half Moon Bay Library Annual Report with our amazing librarian who is giving up her time and energy constantly along with all of her dear friends. So, welcome.
Thank you so much for providing me with the opportunity to talk about what happened at the Half Moon Bay Library and San Mateo County Library for the last year. I provided you with a packet that gives you the annual report for the library, as well as the FAQs for the new building library, and then just if you're interested, information about the Friends of the Library, as well as a bumper sticker that says, "If you build it, they will read." So that's my shameless plug. So now, on to the presentation. So my name is Annie Malli. I'm the branch manager of the Half Moon Bay Library. And so I'm going to tell you a little bit about what happened in the last year. So, San Mateo County Library oversees the Half Moon Bay Library, as well as other 10, as well as other, 10 other cities in the county, and the unincorporated areas of the county. During the year, we were named a four-star library by Library Journal, and this is the sixth consecutive year that that's happened. So we are second in California and 12th nationally amongst our peer libraries. So some of the highlights for San Mateo County Library for the year, we stopped charging for holds, which is huge for us. So now, any patron can borrow any library from throughout the county for free. We also initiated waving fines on your birthday month, so you can get rid of all your overdue fines. As you can see, we really like giving stuff away. We don't like penalizing people. We also brought 3D printers into the branches. And on your desk is a small pumpkin that we printed out on our 3D printer. So if anybody's interested, on Fridays and Saturdays, people can come by and learn how to use the 3D printer. We just initiated downloadable e-movies, so you can get PBS movies and the Criterion Collection. And so this goes with our ebooks, our audiobooks, our e-magazines. So there's lots that you can get away from the library. And then, starting January 2015, we're going to loan out Wi-Fi hotspots. So people who don't have access to the internet can borrow a Wi-Fi hotspot and access the internet from anywhere they bring it. So some of our numbers, 166,000 visits to the library, 296,000 items loaned, 14,000 questions answered, 22,000 people attended programs, and 22,402 hours of computer access. So we continue to be busy. A lot of our time during the year was spent working on the strategic planning process, so updating the conceptual plans for a new library. We met with over 2,000 residents, and many of you participated in our strategic planning process. And what came out of all those meetings was a 25,000-square-foot library at the current site, which would have a community room, digital classroom, homework center, literacy center, quiet study rooms, teen space, children's room, and more space. That is the key. We've been working in a 7,800-square-foot space that is really too small for what we need for our community. Though, we realized that we are in this space for a few more years. And so during the year, we did our HUD upgrade to make the library ADA accessible. So the bathrooms were upgraded. We now have an entrance ramp, so people in wheelchairs and strollers can actually enter the building without having to go into uncoming traffic. And ADA parking spaces. Probably my greatest pleasure is that we have changing tables now in the men's and women's restroom, so children don't have to use my office as a changing room. So it's the small things in life that are really good. We also heard from the community when we did the community meetings that the highest priority went to children's room. And so we went ahead and reorganized the library to provide what was the adult fiction collection has become a children's room. And that's been huge, a huge change, though it's still not big enough for all that we need or all that we want to offer. So summer, it was great that we changed the room in time for summer, because summer was huge this year. We had 1,778 children signed up for summer learning. They received a book at sign-up. So that was a lot of books that we gave out to the community, and all those books were funded by the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Library. We offered a variety of daily programs, like science experiments and Legos and crafts. Because of our space issues, we fortunately worked with Wrenton Park and the Boys and Girls Club, and were able to offer our bigger programs at the Adcock Community Center. And so that was huge. So we didn't have to limit the number of people attending our programs. And then the prizes this year, they always receive books, but Giants tickets, which was a good, really good prize this year. Get cards to local shops and a $1,000 college scholarship one lucky winner received. The Friends of the Library also received a grant from the Antero Foundation. And with that, we were able to go to the local summer schools. And we provided weekly storytime. We brought programs to the facilities. We signed all the kids up for summer reading. And we also visited the classes, both at El Granada and La Honda. We also initiated a summer reading camp. It was an eight-week-long camp, five days a week during the morning, free to the participants. And this was a state library grant that the county library received. And then we were able to hire the Penslo YMCA Revolution Foods to assist with the program. And all the students received lunch during the summer. We continue our school outreach. So we met with 742 students during the year, visited 222 classrooms. The biggest days would be Read for the Record, where in one day, we read to 843 students. And then Day of the Dead, over three days, we had 602 students visit the library and look at our friendas and hear storytime. And then we brought author Mac Barnett. Every year, we try to bring that, an author to the coast side. And so he visited El Granada School. coast side, and so he visited El Granada School. Literacy services, the county library just received a $175,000 grant from the Toyota Foundation, it's a Toyota Family Learning Grant, and with that, over three years, we'll provide family literacy programs to Spanish-speaking families, and they are actually meeting right now over at the Boys and Girls Club space over at Cuna. And this grant is happening at Half Moon Bay and East Palo Alto as well. And then, adult literacy, San Mateo County Reads, continue to support, offer 41 volunteer tutors that worked with 47 students. We couldn't do what we do without our volunteers, we have 73 active volunteers, which includes the literacy tutors, who contributed 5,223 hours, which is huge, and it's high school students, and retirees, and people with computer skills, it's just a really nice mix of people who are making an impact in our community. And so, everything from people who make salsa for our salsa tasting, to people who bring their dogs to let kids read to them. And then, there's the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Library, which are just an amazing partner and are so giving of their time. So currently, we have 170, or they have 175 members, and during the past year, they provided $17,760 to support library programs. They also were huge in helping with the outreach to the community during the strategic planning process, and we really appreciate all that they do for us and that they do for the community. This is our favorite time of year, Food for Fines, just started on Monday, and so people who have fines can bring in food that we then pass on to Coastside Hope. We always collect the most food from any community, so we want to keep that going. Last year, we collected 7,155 pounds of food, so it's a really great partnership. And then, I just wanted to invite you to come to some of our upcoming programs, so this is what's happening this week, so you can tell that we're a really busy branch. We have a reading club tomorrow for 2nd through 5th graders who need help reading, and we have high school students and other volunteers to help with them at 5:00. We have, one of our local patrons is a musician, and he's doing musical storytime tomorrow night, and is going to be singing songs, children's songs from Mexico. California State Parks comes every month, and they're going to talk about coastal plants, and this is their Junior Ranger Program, and that's on Thursday. If you want to learn how to use a 3D printer, or have any other computer questions, we have a volunteer computer coach on Friday at 1:00, and then again on Saturday at 10:00. Friday Family Film is Free Birds, and ready for Thanksgiving. And then, on Saturday, we have a Spanish-English storytime at 9:30, and Saturday Crafts at 10:00. So that is a week in the life of the library. So thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for all you do, and especially all that you've done during the planning for the new library, and I look forward to working with you all next year and seeing what exciting things come about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the time. And do we pick up the new little bumper stickers at the library?
Oh, they're in your package.
Oh, I didn't see it, I've been trying to focus with you.
And if you need more, you can pick up more at the library.
We've got to get one on the tractor, for sure. Very good, thank you, and thanks for this pumpkin that looks like Tom might have grown this one last year, and then he's gotten better every other year. We have a new secret sauce for this one next year. So, thank you, and we appreciate it very much. Moving on now, another positive comment will be from Sharice McHugh on economic development. Status, please.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Mallor and Council. Wait a minute, oh, okay, that's self-explanatory. Hit the air. I'm Sharice McHugh with the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, and I'm here to go over what we've done with the economic development money that you were so kind to award the chamber with a partnership between us and the city. It would be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about the fact that we create a strong local economy all the time, with or without economic development money, so it would take me several slides to put all of the things that we do to help create a strong economic development, economy, a local economy, but these are some of the things that I just thought that I would put up there for you. So one of the things that we were charged with after we did the survey, and after we did all of the group meetings with all the different groups throughout the coast side, not just from the city, but throughout the coast side came and gave us their opinions, one of the things that we were charged with was to create a strong economic development foundation. And one of the things that we're doing to help do that is along with our iCoastside app, that hopefully all of you, and all of you have downloaded, we are putting together a rewards program that will be able to be used in each and every participating store. This has been a little bit slow to get off the ground, basically because we're fond of partners, is creating software that's never been created before. So instead of just having your Starbucks app to go in and get your rewards, you'll be able to go to Its Italia, and Toki Lunch, and possibly your bank, and insurance agent, and you will be able to rack up some reward points that will get you good stuff. We were also charged with increasing hotel occupancies, and I'm proud, what we would like to do is see it go from 67% to 80%. So I just calculated this about four days ago for the last six months, and I am proud to report that we are at 77.5% for the city of Half Moon Bay. If you will recall, in 2008, we were at 49%. So, that little adage, you know, "You've come a long way, baby," certainly comes to mind. We hired Roy Truitt, an independent contractor, to do midweek corporate sales, 20 hours a week. I have been so, so happy with Roy and what he's been able to do. He was, just to give you a little background, he was a hotel manager for Marriott's and Hilton Hotels all over the United States. And he's been in Silicon Valley and Santa Clara for a long time, and helped found the BID for the Santa Clara Visitors Bureau and Chamber and Visitors Bureau. So he's very familiar with a lot of the companies down there, that we would like to have them come here and do their executive meetings and everything, instead of going to Monterey and elsewhere. So we have a new website component, to the visit halfmoonbay.org, and that is halfmoonbaymeetings.com. We also went on Seavent. You know, when large companies are planning to have a retreat or a meeting, they no longer go through those big books and everything that are sent out once a quarter, they go to the web. So, one of the main places they go is Seavent, and we got a free listing, actually, for the year, and we will now be looking at paying for that listing for 2015. We also upped the social media marketing, Terry Plank has done an absolutely exceptional job in raising our rankings, and doing that through social media. And we have a gorgeous corporate brochure that you all have had copies of. This is the halfmoonbaymeetings.com website, just gives you a little bit of an idea, we have an average of about 1,700 visits per month, and we email marketing materials to the qualifying meeting planners, that's a campaign that goes out, the next campaign for that is this month. And then, there is a form, obviously, when people are interested in having a meeting on the coast side, they fill out that form. And we add relevant content constantly. So, the group sales summary. We, Roy has brought 12 conferences since April of 2014, and that represents 4,052 room nights, 11,665 group meals. We did lose some business during the months of September and mostly October, we lost 65 rooms and $31,200, and you probably can guess why, because we're all full up, we don't have any room to put them, so he had to turn business away, which is not a bad position to be in. He booked a total revenue for 2014 of $284,000, as I'd say that's just since April. He has proposed leads for 2015 of 2,150 room nights, 5,000 group meals, total revenue of $869,500, and that would put us year-to-date for $1,184,500 brought to the coast by this ED partnership that we've embarked in, embarked on together. I would say that that's not a bad return. On the right side, you can see a list of some of the companies that he has made sales calls to and inroads with, which is a rather, for those of you in the audience, Intel, Agnet, Kaiser, I won't read them all, but Cisco, Google, several, several names that you would know. Okay, and this is just a picture of our Seavent page, we don't need to go into that, but you can always go on the website and take a look, so that you can see what that looks like for meeting planners, and what they see when they look at the Half Moon Bay Coastside. As I said before, Terry Plank has done a great job with our social media marketing, we have Facebook, blogs, Twitter, a lot of visual marketing, he will go around and take videos, and put it up, it might be of something to do, or somewhere he's eating. With the BID, the Business Improvement District, they actually pay for Terry's part with this. But we have had, we did use a little bit of ED money on a couple of things along the way, but this is mostly paid for by the BID. But you can't just post about hotels all the time, because first of all, people, you know, they understand that you're just trying to sell the hotels, and people don't come to a place to stay in the hotels unless there's some reason to come. So that's where you go out, and you start posting about the fun stuff to do here, the hiking, the kayaking, the bike riding, along the coastal trail, et cetera. And that's the kind of things that he constantly posts, and if you're not, if you haven't befriended Half Moon Bay on social media, please go ahead and do that, because then you will see his posts. It's quite fun. And then, our corporate brochure, which you have all been given copies of, this is a gorgeous, gorgeous piece. Doesn't matter how technologically savvy we become, they want that brochure, they need to take it and show it to their boss, they need to take it and show it to the people who, you know, when they decide where they're going. It's got everything in it, all the pictures, stats, restaurants, things to do, not just about the hotels, not just about Half Moon Bay hotels, we also have the Oceano, other coastside hotels in there, because otherwise, we wouldn't have enough place to put these people. And I know it's ED money, but if they come to the Oceano, they're going to spend money here as well, and it just makes, so that we have more to offer. We also were charged with developing a business retention and expansion program, so we have a Main Street map coming out, we have new welcome signage, and new directional signage, this is a little rendering of the Main Street map, it's a little hard to see, but it will, it's about Main Street, but the Main Street merchants kept telling us that people come in all the time and then ask, "Well, where is Mavericks?", and "Where is the ocean?", they do ask that, guys, trust me. "Where is the ocean?", "Well, let's see, you're on the West Coast." Okay. And where other, you know, where other things are, where the Joes, where the Johnston House, et cetera. So this is going to be, all the merchants will be able to have this, that they can hand out, and it will also have merchants' names and where they are, et cetera, on it. ED money is helping us with that, so thank you very much for that, that's going to, I think, be really, really useful. The welcome signage, this is the one on the goat farm on Highway 92 as you come into town, and a lot of our groups, our organizational groups, such as Lyons, and Odd Fellows, and Rotary, were very, very pleased to get a new sign, and there are logos up there that you could actually read, and that were not peeling and fading away. New directional signage to find Main Street. Obviously, since February, we've had awesome weather, but this was not one day when I took these pictures, probably the only time it rained during the whole summer. But people turn off of Highway 1 on the north side by McDonald's, and they go past the backside of New Leaf, they go past a PG&E plant, they get to 92 and say, "Well, wow, that was Main Street?", "That wasn't a whole box of chocolates?", and they get, you know, disconcerted, and they turn off, go back over 92, or back to Highway 1. These signs actually are encouraging them, "Shop, dine, stay, keep going, you're on the right track." And then, we have another one if they turn off on Main Street at the south end of town, to come along and see that, and not get discouraged, and keep going until they find the downtown. We also will be replacing, the beautification committee was kind enough to allow us to have their sign, the sign on the left is the one in front of the Johnston House coming into town. These are temporary signage, by the way, we have an entire signage program, the city, I shouldn't say wait, the city has an entire signage program that is going to do more gateway signs, et cetera, but these are to get us started. The sign on the right has, we will have to get Caltrans permission, we thought we could do that, being on private property, but it'll be too far away. But that's the kind of signage that we're looking at, to direct, this first stage of the signage is mainly directing people to the downtown area, because we still do get people, not as much as we used to, but we still do get people to come into town, drive down Highway 1, never find Main Street, and call our office later and say, "We found out that you have a really cute town, but we never found it." So hopefully, we're going to improve that. Another thing that we were charged with is improving the internet access working on the coast side, with high-speed internet, et cetera. So Alex and I met with Rob Genovesi of Coastside Net, and it seems that we learned something, there's probably a lot of techies in the audience that are going to say, "Well, yeah, I knew that", but we didn't. And here's the deal, we have the exact same capabilities of anywhere, we have the exact same capabilities as over the hill, there is nothing that they have that we don't have, except for one thing, they have high rises. So when you go in, any property owner can get the high-speed internet, the fiber optics, et cetera, to their building. But when you're doing it in San Mateo with a six-story building and 200 offices, you split that cost amongst all your tenants. Here, either the person renting the building, and what, he might have two, three clients in there, maybe four, or the owner has to foot that bill, so it makes it a little cost prohibitive for us to have that up and down the coast. But if at some point, there is a way to do that, or the city needs the love, that's something that we can take a look at. And we were also charged with developing culinary arts and agritourism. So, we did Healthy Kids Fair in September, we did the Host of Harvest Dinner at the end of September, Turf of Flares, we didn't use any ED money on, but I felt that it needed to be up there, since that's one that we've been doing for 17 years, and it definitely falls into that category. And then, we possibly, we were going to be planning another farm to table dinner in the spring, and I'll go over the first two in a minute. But we have come up with a plan that I think Council might like better, it's just in the beginning stages, and we, well, nothing is in stone, so don't hold any tany of this, but I think we're going to have between four and five events the last Thursday of the month, from May to September, on Main Street, and now, please, all merchants hear this, there will be no street closures. Let me repeat that, there will be no street closures. Just so that I don't get killed tomorrow.
You have many more to go, Sharice?
Almost.
We'll get you there.
We're almost.
Get you to...
We're almost. Healthy Kids Fair was in conjunction with New Leaf, and that was really, really well-attended, and people absolutely loved it. It was all about kids, it was all about health, it was all about recycling, et cetera. Husker Harvest Dinner was very well-attended, everybody really, really liked it, but it was really, really cost prohibitive. It cost about $100 million per person for us to put that on. So it's not something that would be sustainable for us to do in the future. That's why we're looking at the other event. And the one thing that we did do is we pulled out all court press on, or all cost on press. We did a full court press, and this is all in very small print, all of the press that we received around the United States, especially Bay Area, on the Husker Harvest Dinner. And that is the end of my part, and I will introduce Dante Hall.
Thank you, very active.
And my section will be very brief, but I just wanted to mention, as in economic development, it's really kind of an ecosystem where we're dependent upon the strength and health of our businesses, and so we want to work very hard together. When the city decided to create the Community Development Department, it was something that was done with a lot of forethought, because you're looking at the entire development process. A lot of these things relate or state there for planning, but we're really doing it for the entire department. And for the department, three goals, three things that we're focusing on, that we want to tell people what the rules are in plain English. Number two, we want to be responsive to people, we want to be practical with people's time and people's money. And number three is that we want to be consistent and predictable. And get all of the uncertainty out is what people want to do, to do business with the city. So a lot of these things are focused on that. They've been completed, we've instituted full-time planning calendar hours, we've done that for, for building also, so that anytime during the city hall hours, people can come in and do business with the city. We are predictable in our completeness letters, we have a 20-day cycle in getting back to people and telling them when their project is scheduled for hearing and so forth. Plain English, we've revised a lot of our applications and permits, we've made them available on our website, and we're still working through the process. Another example, our residential summary sheets, we took about five pounds of code of just narrative, it kind of folded down to pictures, illustrations, and again, in plain English, telling people what the rules are is a big time saver. And lastly, is the predictability of timing, of schedule for a hearing. Before, people didn't have certainty when they submitted a project to the city of when it would go to the hearing and when. We can tell them with pretty much certainty, if they submit their application on this date, we will be able to go to the Planning Commission on this date. And so that's, that's just very helpful. A year ago, we did a workshop for the development community and just people that did business with our city. We did a workshop, and it's time to kind of survey people again, and we'll be releasing or distributing another survey, asking people about their experiences with the Community Development Department, with the development process, and from that, we will set goals for, for the future. So, we're glad to be a partner with the chamber and with the community.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
And this will show you what has been spent to date and what is still there that can be spent from here on to the end of the, of the agreement in, in July.
Thank you very much for your hard work and also dedication. Yes, Arnold?
Apologize, John, I feel very talkative today.
I know when to cut you off.
Fair enough. So I just wanted to acknowledge Charisse and your, your work. When we worked hard past Measure J a few years ago, part of that commitment to the community was we were going to dedicate some of those funds to go to economic development, and that that effort would be led by the chamber and under your leadership. And I'll be honest, I was concerned about where it was going to go and what we were going to get for it. And I'm delighted that the, the work you did and the results that you've got for our community, well worth every penny. It's just remarkable, and I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate that very, very much. And regarding the, the, our plans, anecdotally, Dante gets in, there was celebrated anniversary of the church I attend this past weekend, and they just rebuilt over the course of last year, and they were, during their presentation, they called out Half Moon Bay planning. We didn't expect it to be a good process or enjoyable, but oddly, it was. And they actually called it out during the presentation, so good work to everybody.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just quickly, I want to thank the work of the chamber. So many of our businesses are locally owned, and I think through the work you're doing has kept those businesses open, but especially kept in the hospitality area, a lot of people here on the coast employed. We know how the recession had hit very hard a few years ago, and a lot of people that live here locally were out of work, so I'm glad to see that they're all gainfully employed, and a lot of that is through the work that your organization has done to keep these businesses open and keep folks here on the coast with jobs. Thanks.
Councilman Patrick?
I just want to thank you, Charisse. I've always been a real hard critic of the chamber, and I want to applaud you for what you have done and all the things that have come out of there, and it's, it's been really great, and what a working relationship that we've been able to develop with the city. So thank you so much.
Councilman Alfano?
I agree.
And thank just briefly that, you know, to get a return, you need to have an investment, and it looks like, as Councilman Qualcheck said, we invested in the chamber, and it shows by the numbers of return up there. We can drive by our establishments that are pretty busy almost all the time, hotels are busy, and I think that's very positive for all of us for revenue on the coast side. Highway 1 traffic is busy, we all know that, and Highway 92 traffic is busy, we know that. So, went to the city for a meeting this morning, and let me tell you, the traffic is bad everywhere. So, that's the way California is moving right now. So, thank you. So moving on, we go on to next item, mayor's announcements. And the election season is over, and I would like to personally congratulate our recently-elected new council members that will be seated on December 2nd, our first council meeting in December. First, congratulations to Councilmember-elect Ruddock and Councilmember-elect Penrose. I don't know if they're in the room here tonight. Yep, Councilmember Ruddock, if you could stand up. Thank you, congratulations on my behalf. Re-election of Councilman Qualcheck, congratulations. I'm looking forward for all of us to work together. There's some challenging times ahead with the cities, but we can all work together to continue to move the city forward in a positive direction, and really hopefully looking forward to that. And so, I think December 2nd will be an exciting evening for, for our city of Half Moon Bay here. So, other announcements, community service, I know there's quite a few going on, there's a job fair, thank you, on November 21st with Representative Jackie Spear. It's an annual event at the County Event Center. And does anyone else have some? I know Night of Lights is coming up, but that's up to the next meeting. I don't know what we have, anything this week up there. So, we will continue to move on. So, we'll move on with the city attorney. I like us, most important, it is the beginning of a Thanksgiving holiday time coming up here, and I think that's definitely a time of giving, and we think of Christmas as giving, but the library folks are giving, and all of us are going to be giving and sharing. I think it's a very important, wonderful week for all of us, so wishing everyone the beginning of a happy holiday season here coming up. So, city attorney, comments on a closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Mueller, members of the city council. There was a very brief closed session this evening that started at 5:45, just before the workshop on the MacDutra Park. That involved one item of pending litigation, the Gradstein and Gorman versus California Coastal Commission case. The council received a report from the city attorney's office and gave direction, but there was no reportable action taken, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. City council reports, we'll start with our senior member here, Councilmember Patrick.
I attended the Transportation Authority Subcommittee meeting on high-speed rail and electrification of Caltrans, and a presentation will, will be made to the Transportation Authority Board, which happened the next, the following week. I attended the Measure S Oversight Committee meeting for CUSD. Attended my last Transportation Authority meeting. We received a program report on the highway programs, of all the different highway programs that are being funded through Measure A. Mike Scanlon, the executive director, reported on the joint powers, excuse me, board, and also his executive report. Carol Matsumoto gave her report on the transit district. We accepted the quarterly investment report and fixed income market review, and we did go into closed session regarding litigation on property acquisition for the Broadway project, you know, the big Broadway interchange project there. Attended the mural presentation at Moonside along with Vice Mayor Frazier. Attended the Big Wave San Mateo County Planning Commission hearing held at Algonada School, and attended the Coastal Commission reception. Attended the MTC Highway Awards luncheon, and I'm really, really, really proud to announce that Half Moon Bay was one of only three cities to be recognized from seven Bay Area counties. Maraga and Brentwood were the other two cities, along with Half Moon Bay, and our award was for the most improved roads. So this council should be very proud that our roads have gone really up and we've been recognized. So I'd like to present this to you, John. And then, and then on a side note, this doesn't have anything to do with city council, but it does have to do with my passion for kids. Every year, the tides, this is a young traveling team, seven and a half to nine-year-old girls. I tell my family every year, "Oh, I don't know how they're going to do, I don't know how they're going to do." Lo and behold, the Little Devils won the championship. They were ranked seventh, beat the second-place team, beat the fourth-place team, and beat the third, first-place team for the championships, and the 12U teams also won the championships. And I have to announce that, yeah. So, and I really want to announce, because this is really exciting for us local Half Moon Bay alumni, when we beat Terranova in football, and we retained the score, and the score was 49 to 48. So it was an exciting night with the Coonos. That's all.
And thank you. I'd like to just share this, it's a street saver program. Thank the city staff for all the work they put into it, and all of you for your patience with street improvement works, and the city council, when we made the commitment, hopefully we can win a couple more of these. It'll be a little more challenging, but we at least got one here. So congratulations to all of you. Councilman Qualcheck?
Thank you. Meeting yesterday, and I just, in general, want to report that our working dynamic, working relationship with the other member agencies is as good as it's ever been, and in large part due to the collaborative efforts of Councilmember Alfano and to the support from Alex Kajiki and our staff. So that, it's just going really well. We've been watching our flow rates, so we pay for sewer services based on flow and volume, lovely is that, is to think about, and, but it's serious money, and it's, and it's serious money for the city. And so we're watching that and monitoring it and making sure that we are paying a fair amount, and, but the things are going well there, just report that in general, and, and no issues. Then the rest are just activities around the community. Attended the concert at the park, and really want to acknowledge Sharazad and the work of the Parks and Rec Committee on putting on the concert at the park, and it's, it was fabulous. We had probably 150 people continually rolling through, people would walk on, people would add, come in, and it was just excellent. It was just a good community feel, good community event, and looking forward to the next one. And actually, Sharazad, I need to talk to you about the next one, if we get a chance. And I attended the ribbon cutting for the Boys and Girls Club at the, the community center here for making this, sharing our space for the teen center, and high-energy evening, and the kids are loving it, and it's a great use for the space, so a good decision on all of our parts to continue to collaborate there. And then we just completed a study session about MacDutra Park, and I, I want everybody in the community to know that, you know, we're, we're planning changes to MacDutra Park, but also that I spent some time and outreach this weekend with a local community member, Eric DeBoe, and I went over and spoke to the day workers at the park, let them know about the project, what's coming up, and what to expect, so that nobody in the community has any surprises with the changes in the park. And those were all my activities.
Thank you. Councilman Alfano?
We had a business roundtable, the chamber sponsors this the fourth Friday of every month, and it's really an excellent opportunity for the businesses in town to attend and find out things that are happening. The city manager came with some of the city staff and talked about what was happening in town. It's a really great way for information to get passed along. We always hear the complaint of, "Gee, you don't talk to me enough, you don't communicate well." The fourth Friday of each month, just check with the chamber website, and there's, there's great topics that should be of interest to the business owners, and if they want to hear something, they need to let the chamber know, who can then schedule to get that topic on there. SAM also, we've had two meetings, and the one thing that's really, not only I agree with Councilmember Qualcheck that, we've really had an improvement in the, the attitude cooperation with the SAM members, and it's, it's been a difficult thing to get to that point, but it's really nice to go there now and see everybody trying to accomplish something. And the really, really positive thing is we're very close to putting together a contract to do recycled water from SAM to CCWD, Coastside Water, onto the golf courses. And with the drought we've been going through, it's really a great project. So we're very close. The agency have to approve the principles, I think the city council should have that on the December meeting, and then once that's all agreed to, then SAM and CCWD will hammer out the details of a contract. Be a great way to, to reduce the use of potable water that the golf course currently buys from Coastside Water and replace that with recycled water and stop putting it out into the ocean. And the last thing, again, I agree, the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center ribbon cutting was great. These kids are really doing a great job, the staff of the Boys and Girls Club is doing a great job. And I mean, I've read some of these posts, like Facebook, people like, "Really? After all these years, you finally made it happen?" And when we had the, the gang meeting in this room about three or four years ago, the one thing that the sheriff and all of his advisors said to the community was, "Keep the kids busy after school. Do not let the kids have idle hands after school, or they will get in trouble." And by having things like the teen center next door, and walk there if you haven't seen it, it keeps the kids busy. The library, the teen center, all these things are to keep these kids out of trouble. And it's really helped. So, when you get a chance, go over and take a look at it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I attended a couple of sign committee meetings with members of the public, and as was mentioned in the chamber's presentation, there are a lot of people, we all know where everything is, but it's amazing when people do come down, night, over 92, looking for the beach, and they end up in the Safeway parking lot. So we're using best practices from other towns to identify signs, and that's going to be coming to council and planning in January. I was on behalf of the mayor, I gave a welcome to the Coastal Commission, and want to thank Board of Supervisor Carol Groom for bringing the Coastal Commission here on the coast. It was the first time the Coastal Commission has It was the first time the Coastal Commission has ever met in Samhain County. So we're fortunate that they stayed out in Oceana, and they enjoyed it very much. So a lot of thanks to Keat and Nancy Nurhan. The Coastal Commission was very gratified with the service and hospitality they received there, and they got a lot of work done, they had a lot of late meetings. The concerts in the park, that's also been mentioned, that was a great event. Want to thank our Park and Rec Committee, particularly Sherzad, John, Sue, and Marcia for all their work. And I think the Beatles cover band was a big hit. I don't see them here, but there were a lot of people that were out dancing that usually come to our meetings, so I've got video proof. I think these folks were teenagers when the Beatles first hit, and they were out having a great time. So we look to have more of those type of things, and definitely a party before we tear apart MacDutra to have the new one, so we can have more of these concerts out here. I did also attend with Councilmember Patridge, the unveiling of a healing mural down at Moon Ridge. And through our library, JPA, presented the conceptual plan of the library. And just want to thank the community also for a great success of our library book sales over the weekend. Thank you throughout the year for donating to the library, that funds so many programs to the tune of about $20,000 a year, as was made in an earlier presentation, that was noted. So it was a great success, and we look forward to continuing that. Also, and today I spent time in Pescadero with the Cabrillo School District Assistant Superintendent John Corey. We do a program in support of Rotary and Chamber, where we're helping the high school seniors learn how to prepare and present themselves in the workplace, how to professionally get a new job, and all those little things that, you know, you really have to be taught, little tips and tricks, and it's, I think they learned a lot, and it's also very rewarding to be a part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate council covering for me. I don't have much to report on, going through some personal family issues. But I did stop by the Senior Resource Fair vendors event here last week, that was just spectacular, put on by the title sponsor, Samhain County Health Plan, and Senior Coast Siders, and Half Moon Bay Review, and there was over 25 vendors there. It was just an amazing showing of the diversity that this community has built, and the affordable housing that we are building and have built, that we really are recognized, I think, throughout Samhain County for the planning of our senior community. And they were definitely out in force there with all the vendors, getting advice and sharing their experiences and their energy out there. So I keep telling them to save me a room, but they haven't yet, so we'll keep, keep on farming. So thank the council, and thank staff for their patience here the last couple of months. So at this time, we go to city managers' updates, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, mentioned it before, Night of Lights, and there's a nice brochure that Shuri shared with me, and I'm sure will show it to all of you, and just remind the community that City Hall will be open, and look forward to seeing you there. The concert in the park, just again, a reminder that the next concert will be on May 3, and hope to see folks there over at the Johnston House. As you know, perhaps know, the, wanted to just report that the appeal, the tsunami siren appeal to the Coastal Commission was withdrawn a week before the meeting, therefore the appeal was not heard. And just starting to give a heads up, the holidays are upon us, and the City Hall will be closed from December 24 through January 5. I'll continue to remind us each of the meetings, but just wanted to start the heads up on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. I forgot to mention, which is kind of exciting, there's a new farmer's market stamp out there, a posted stamp, that the state of California pushed with the US Postal Service. It's quite an attractive stamp. So I know our farmer's market manager, Aaron Tormey, worked really hard on working through that, too. So we have a farmer's market stamp out there now. So I'll move on to public forum, and I have a number of cards. My first one will be Hope Atmore, please, and followed by David Schnor. Thank you. Schnor?
Thank you, Mayor Mueller and council members. My name is Hope Atmore, and I'm co-president of the Friends of the Library. The Friends of the Library supported Measure O as a means to help fund a new library through an extension of the Measure J sales tax. By using funds from the sales tax, we felt that it was a way to more equally share some of the cost of a new library among all members of the Coastside, and not just Half Moon Bay residents. Additionally, with money brought in through tourism, the entire Coastside could benefit. While we were disappointed by the outcome on November 4, we were and are ready to pursue other funding mechanisms. Nonetheless, I do feel that we would like to be certain that the will of the voters is accurately represented. As provisional ballots have continued to be counted, the margin by which Measure O failed has diminished, and as of today, Measure O lost by only 20 votes. I would like to request that the council advise staff to research the feasibility of a recount on Measure O. I feel confident that if the tables were turned and Measure O had won by 20 votes, the other side would be making a similar request. As I have said privately and publicly throughout this process, the Friends of the Library will continue to work with all interested members of the community to make what is clearly an important goal, a reality for our town. We are already poised to move forward, however, I would like to be sure that every vote that should have been counted actually is counted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hope. David, please. We, after, I think we can conclude after comments, I believe that's proper. Yes, welcome, David.
Mayor Mueller and council members, thanks. As members of the public, issues kind of rise to our attention sometimes, and often without the context, background, and details that you guys are aware of. Nonetheless, I think in the past week, it was, I read briefly that the city was planning on spending $100,000 to put in two electric vehicle charging stations someplace downtown. Again, without the context, background, and detail, the reason given was that that would attract well-heeled visitors to our town with their electric vehicles, Tesla, I Since Mayor Mueller spoke to an investment needing a return on investment, I really have to question the logic in that. I think if you penciled out how long it would take to return $100,000 of economic benefit to the city through those two charging stations, the answer would be sometime between a long time and never. I fully support the idea of environmentally sensitive infrastructure. I own a Prius, we've got solar panels on our roof, all that good stuff. But if you're really looking at making Half Moon Bay a model city for environmental sensitivity, that $100,000 would relamp several hundred streetlights as LEDs with a return on investment in a matter of years, if that, with greatly reducing our carbon footprint. I would like the City Council to also consider, in the long term, a larger project of taking some parcel of vacant land that we have, and putting a megawatt-scale solar farm on it, and making the city of Half Moon Bay carbon neutral. I think that would be a big feather in our cap. That would increase our prestige, and we'd be helping lead the way towards a future that we know we have to get on board with as soon as possible. So, in summary, I, if the horse has left the barn on this $100,000 project, so be it, but I would hope that, you know, rather than making a symbolic gesture towards a green footprint, that we allocate our resources in a way that make a measurable and sustainable difference. Thanks.
Thank you. Maybe, maybe staff could update us soon on that, send out a notice to us, or, would you like to make a comment at the end here?
I don't have the data in front of me, we were doing hand signals here, and I'm not sure we were getting them, but it's certainly not $100,000.
Yeah, we don't have to do it now, but we could...
Okay, great. Why don't we send a report, and we can certainly contact the gentleman, give them the information, the other information.
Yeah, get ahold of the data, please.
Happy to do that.
I don't want to start responding to public comment, otherwise it, it doesn't give a fair opportunity for all. Brian Gane, please.
Evening, Mayor Mueller, City Council and staff. Thank you. Just want to take a moment to thank Naomi for her many years of service on the council, and Alan for a number of years here, and this five council here for the last four years, all that you have accomplished, and you've had my support, and thank you for all that work. Second, one thing to note, on the Coastal Commission tsunami appeal, although it was withdrawn, it's important to note that the Coastal Commission staff did deny the appeal in no uncertain terms. And thank you to city staff for following through, following through, I think, four years of work on that appeal, and getting that kind of result. And it's the second one that has been basically won in this manner. So when you have logic, and the law, and the facts on your side, please do fight those fights. And one thing for Dante to note, too, I've spoken to two people who are doing construction projects, one who's expanding, one who's a new business, and one person involved in residential construction in the last month or so, and they've said the planning department has never seemed to have been working as well as it is now. And they, they said it's responsive, it is easy to work with, it is just a generally nice experience overall, and I think the two little cheat sheets you put up there at the end there are very indicative of the kind of process going on there now. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Sherzad, for public comment, we still have two cards left here. Yes, I had one card for you. I don't have a card for you, ma'am, but...
I'm so sorry.
Not on public comment, I don't have a card.
Okay, sorry. If you have room for me, my name is Judy Messias.
Yes, of course, yeah. I apologize. Yes, Judy, go ahead.
Okay. I am here with my co-chair, Julia O'Daly of Half Moon Bay, to comment on the wonderful senior fair that you mentioned, that took place last Friday. And if you lived in the city of Half Moon Bay, I don't think there was a parking place left. It was an amazing turnout. And Village of the Coastside was one of the exhibitors at the fair, and we were most impressed. At least 200 people signed up to learn more about the Village of the Coastside, and I won't go into that tonight, but I did want to encourage all of you, and the audience, to take the Coast Siders Dilemma Retirement Survey. All the information is here, and I'll leave more information at the door. And we are asking if baby boomers want to age in place, and whether they have all the services they need here on the Coastside to age in place. And we are looking at a national village model, and creating the Village of the Coastside. So the information is here, you go online, and you go to www.villageofthecoastside.org, and there is a seven or eight-minute survey. Thank you to the Chamber for supporting the platform for the survey, and to the library for being another one of our partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and both of you for your hard work, and it's a point of interest, there's two of us that are the original baby boomers in America that live in Half Moon Bay, Steve Oku and myself, were 1146, were the first ones, so...
You need it.
We will, so, Sherzad, thank you for letting Judy step in.
Of course. Hello, good morning, and good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Sherzad Pantera, Chair of Parks and Recreation for the city of Half Moon Bay, our committee, and thank you so much for your support of Concert in the Park. It was really wonderful, we're looking forward to having more, and we'll talk to all the council members. But what I'm here to also talk about is, through our Concert in the Park, we did have it at MacDutra Park to showcase the redoing of the park, and we have had time capsule. So we're really excited about our time capsule, and I do want to before thank my co-chair, Marcia Riley, for helping with putting together the concerts, and of course, my committee members that all were part of it. But with Cameron Palmer was also a huge help with us, and we came up with having a time capsule that we're going to bury when we redo MacDutra Park and open it up in the 100th anniversary of our city's, our city's, our city's birthday. And my son is currently 14 years old, and he'll be 59 when, when we open that up, so that's something to put it in perspective. But we, so currently now, the time capsule is housed at City Hall. Thank you so much. And there's forums available, we're really inviting the public, please go in, put whatever you like, just no food, and there's, but there's plenty of space, and put it in the time capsule, and it'll be opened up in 100 years, and hopefully we'll be able to bury it in, when we start the construction project in early 2015. Thank you.
Great idea. We'll have to bring him a couple pumpkin seeds. So my last public forum, Matthew, are you still here? Did he leave our Pacific Coast TV person? Yep, there you are, I knew you were here.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and City Council, Martin and I, with the community television station, Channel 27. And just wanted to say, Pacific Coast TV, my good man is going to pass around some cards for you, want to invite you to an event this weekend, is basically why I'm here, but just to touch on a couple of quick things, in terms of the economic development and the video that was aforementioned. You know, we have, in the last two years at Pacific Coast TV, amassed hundreds and hundreds of hours of the coastal trails, of the water, of the whales that do their thing just off the coast, and it's just been amazing in the last couple of years what we've been able to, to not only catalog. Some of these have been not only on demand, but on YouTube and on our channel, have gotten well over 40, 50, 60,000 hits. So, without, without putting too fine a point on it, we're here to be a full partner in that economic development, and in terms of bringing awareness to the Coastside. And again, part of that is this event. I just wanted to invite you all, and again, I know some of you have actually participated on our red carpet TV auction. This auction, of course, does primarily raise funds for Pacific Coast TV to help us to continue to do what we do, but it also is our opportunity to give back to the local business community, and to let that light shine, to really shine a spotlight on that business community. And again, not just for the Coast Siders, not just for the folks in Pacifica who may or may not know so many wonderful things about all the local businesses, and the folks down at Pescadero, and the back and forth, but also for the growing internet audience that we've got now, folks from literally all over the world. I had folks literally calling in and bidding on items from, last year I had Ireland, England, let's see, several different European countries, as well as a couple places in Africa and on the continent of Asia. So it's just really been a beacon, and what it's meant is that we're able to give thanks and shed a spotlight on some of those businesses. So if you guys want to come and help us man the phones this weekend, we'd love to have it. My number's on here, give me a call. But, and for those people that do not have Comcast, that can't see us on Channel 27, you can get us at pacificcoast.tv. So hope to see you this weekend, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Matthew, and thank you for the service. At this time, that concludes public forum, and we will move on to the consent count. Yes? Yes?
I'm sorry, so there was a public forum comment, and normally I won't comment on public forum, but regarding Measure O and inquiry about, I guess I would like to understand the general process for a recount, and how we might support that.
I don't have great detail, but based on my experience in the past, it's something like, after the results get certified, which will be December 2, we have a number of days after that time, or someone who would like to request a recount has a number of days to then request that recount. They have, I think it's about five to 10 days. They have, the county then has a mechanism by which the recount can be done either manually or by machine, and there's a cost associated with both of those counts. The machine count is usually less expensive, because they run them through the process. If it's a manual count, then they have several staff members that are physically, individually counting each of the ballots. And what the areas in which the numbers might change are those which may have been disqualified in the past, based on perhaps a signature wasn't legible, or that kind of thing. So you have two or three people then reviewing those ballots, and then making a... So you have two or three people then reviewing those ballots, um, and then making a determination about each individual ballot. I could certainly get more information for the council and happy to bring that forward if you'd like.
Yes, if you could bring something back for our next meeting, that would be great. Thank you.
Happy, happy to do that.
And we have time for recount. Okay, very good. So moving on to the consent calendar, um, we have a request for pulling, uh, a number of items, so, um, council, what's your, um, interest here on the consent calendar?
Is, has there any, any of them that have been asked to be pulled?
I'd like to pull number nine, please.
Number nine will be pulled. Uh, also, I've had a public request for item seven and item 10, same individual, uh, seven and 10.
I would make a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, eight on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and thinking. Any further discussion, comments? If not, all in favor on those items?
Aye.
Aye.
So order, uh, do you want to knock out the consent calendar here while we have an opportunity? We'll start with number, uh, seven. Okay, we will start with, uh, item seven. I have a brief staff presentation.
I will take that. Art Grill has come to the city and are proposing, is proposing a food truck to be located at Pel, at, uh, Poplar Beach. Uh, it would run from November through May, and it would go, um, for the lunch hour between 11:00 and 2:00, and for dinner from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And on the staff report, you will see the different requirements that we have set forward, including the annual payment of $616, the city license, business license, insurance, the hours of operations, which I've already mentioned, and then the location in terms of where the food truck will be located. Um, and then, of course, because there's food involved, all counter requirements in terms of health and safety, uh, conditions must be complied with as well.
Thank you. Uh, do you, would you like to hear from the, uh, individual who requested pull? So Rick Hernandez, please.
Hi, I'm Rick Hernandez, I live at 360 Poplar Street. Uh, I've talked to a lot of my neighbors, and most of us think the food truck is a good experiment on Poplar Beach. However, for those of you who don't visit Poplar, Poplar Beach on the weekends, um, I think you might be surprised to the extent of the garbage problem we have on the beach, particularly plastic bags, plastic utensils, things that come from the McDonald's, uh, the Taco Bell, other restaurants in the area. I provided a picture, uh, to city staff that is being passed around to, uh, the council there of what we do on weekends, which is pick up garbage from the beach. Uh, my kids were proud to have recovered a Safeway shopping cart and about 100 pounds of garbage, uh, from the beach. And I know many of our neighbors participate in that. So as you look to approve, uh, item number seven, um, we would request that you make a condition that any of the serving utensils be 100% biodegradable or paper products, and that they don't use any kind of plastic bag, uh, as, uh, wanted as terrible litter, and even biodegradable plastic bags, uh, may not be so good for the leatherback turtles that feed off of, uh, the jellyfish off our coast. So if you could, uh, take that into consideration, uh, that would be greatly appreciated. Uh, we would also ask that the permit fees and sales tax that, uh, arise from this business be set aside for additional cleanup on the beach, because that's sorely lacking there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, comments, Vice Mayor?
Um, I appreciate the comments from, from the speaker. I think this is a good thing to, to pilot, um, and I'm especially okay to agree with this because it is a local business, so it's not outside businesses coming in here to sell food. This is, um, a business on Main Street. So I think it's a good time to see how this works out. Um, certainly if this extends, um, garbage or there's a big mess with this, um, you know, I think we should cease operation of it. And, um, and appreciate the speaker's family cleaning up, as so many people do, um, who live here clean up the beach. Um, I think that's an issue that we have with our visitors. And the bigger garbage cans we get, it seems they still get full, so there's, there's gotta be another way to tackle this. Um, but I think that, let's, let's pilot this to, to see how this works out with the season, with this vendor. And if there are other issues, then I think we should go and look at that, and it's either we continue and we fix it, or we, um, end that type of business.
Very good. Uh, Council McPhee?
Big surprise, I have something to say. Um, so yeah, so I, I concur with it, Maria, let's pilot, give it a, a shot, but also ask staff to, uh, is also made aware of the similar comments about trash at Poplar. And, and, uh, I guess that, related to this and the comments from the speaker, I'd like to keep an eye on it, uh, and if we need additional pickups, additional coverage, additional something, uh, let's, let's catch it, um, before it becomes a, a bigger issue, or even if you have to act now, let's, uh, if we could look at that.
Yeah, it'd be great. It was, it was good to hear from the neighbors that are down there, and we all know about Poplar Beach and the issues, but let's face facts, I mean, we probably haven't heard from a neighbor in a couple of years, so it'd be great for either Rick or the other neighbors periodically to come and just give us an update, and we can continue to find out ways to, to improve this. Um, it's a great resource for people who want to come and park at the beach, and it's also potentially a great way to maybe serve some food and make some money for local business, but we do want to keep things clean. So thank you, and, um, it'd be good if you, or your neighbors would come back periodically and give us an update.
I, I think a lot of the garbage problems are just the beach colors. I think it's all of our local residents dumping their garbage into our dumpsters down there. I have that happen all the time at the high school. My dumpster gets filled by other people dumping their dump stuff in there. So I think we need to maybe watch, have maintenance watch and make sure that they're not being used by the general public, because I know down at Smith Field, that's also a problem. So anytime you have a dumpster, everybody thinks it's theirs, that they can go and use it.
Well, I think when you're talking about trash, if I was king in the world, uh, trash would be one of the major things you would work to, uh, clean up. Um, we see it on Main Street that, uh, residents are bringing their trash and using our Main Street, uh, receptacles also. But I believe we are, we are one of the cities that originally started a polystyrene ban, number one, and number two, plastic bag ban. So I think that would, uh, encourage this vendor to look at very closely, uh, that we do have a policy in place for plastic bag and polystyrene. So I don't know what type of, uh, vessel he will have to distribute his food. And I kind of believe that he should be taking it, uh, the vendor should take his own trash out too, and he, uh, leaves the, uh, the property there. So any other comments on that, but, uh, uh, otherwise we could, uh, take...
I move to approve the license agreement between the city of Half Moon Bay and Art Grill.
Second.
Any other further comments, questions? If not, uh, we could, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so ordered 5-0. Now we move to item nine. Um, staff, a presentation, please, and I have no cards on item nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is for an approval of a contract with Big Scardozza to do some preliminary design services. We have, uh, worked with the Coastal Conservancy and also with State Parks to, uh, really put, um, the scope of the project and the replacement of Pilositos Bridge, um, and pinpoint that as much as possible in terms of cost and also permitting. Um, Big Scardozza has worked with the city in the past, as you, as you recall, they, um, invested some time and also brought to us several temporary options. Um, and they are also doing a corrosion study to actually determine the damage, um, that's been done over the years to the footings, uh, to the substructure, I should say, um, of the bridge, and trying to pin down exactly what needs to be repaired or, uh, replaced. So what this work is, is geotechnical studies, um, environmental studies, and starting to work on the permitting, uh, for the project to get us to a point where we have preliminary designs, we have a, a, a closer cost estimate, um, and, um, we would bring that information back to city council prior to, um, getting, get, getting design drawings done and going out to bid. So this is just for the preliminary design services for the Pilositos Bridge. I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Dante. And I, I wanted to pull this item to point out that, uh, so this is a $91,000 budgeted item that we have budgeted, uh, that we, we have the money to spend on, uh, the Pilositos Bridge because of, uh, the funds we raised through Measure J. Um, and, uh, and so we're helping, uh, replace essentially the, a bridge that is not within our control, but because it affects our community, it's a, we think that's a wise use of those funds, and we, we put, I think, $100,000 aside for that. Uh, we, we further, uh, dedicated, I think, in total, um, said, uh, should Measure O pass, we would, um, dedicate or budget $300,000 towards this project. Um, and so I would ask the city manager, uh, that when we do our budgeting process, that we need to examine this, so, um, uh, so, uh, without Measure O, without the extra $200,000, it has to come from somewhere or nowhere. And so I think we need to, uh, look at our projects and decide whether or not we are able to reprioritize and continue to budget for this item. And that's my only comment.
Any, yeah, Naomi, Councilman Patras? No comments?
Motion.
Um, well, a brief comment, um, as I understand, and I've looked into this, and I've worked with this group before, uh, they have a, a fine reputation of, uh, of doing work at an affordable cost, number one, and I think it's definitely within, uh, staff, would you kind of brief me, but I think it's definitely within our, uh, policy that we do not have to open up, uh, public bids also, just kind of a little brief background, background. Uh, city attorney, please.
For professional services like engineers, um, it's, it's very typical to base the selection of the consultant on the quality of the proposal and the, and the skill of the, of the engineering professional. Um, so it's not a, the type of contract for which the city has any legal obligation to, uh, open it to public bidding, nor would bidding for that type of services generally be considered a, um, a wise, uh, way to select, uh, an engineering professional.
Thank you. If there's no further questions or comments, entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution authorizing professional services for preliminary design phase of the Pilositos Bridge Creek Bridge Replacement Project. Read that wrong.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any further discussion or comments? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, so ordered, 5-0. Uh, and we move on to item 10, uh, we have a request, we pulled that, um, and, uh, we'll have a brief staff presentation on item 10.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. From time to time, we get requests from the public or from groups to make certain, um, uh, amendments or, or, um, corrections to traffic regulations. And in the past, that has kind of been approached in kind of a piecemeal fashion. Uh, what I've done is, uh, created a traffic safety committee, um, to meet periodically and to, um, provide recommendations, um, all at once. And that, that committee includes, uh, myself as a community development director, planning, uh, public work superintendent, city engineer, and our sheriff's department to kind of provide input. Um, this is the result of, uh, one of our first, uh, meetings in that fashion to look at, um, at, um, amendments to our, our citywide traffic regulations. Um, there are some times where, um, the amendments or what people requesting require capital funding or, or mon, more funding bets than is available in our budget, and we'll look at that as we look at budget, uh, in each year. But there are times where we do have the resources and we can easily make the traffic corrections, um, and this is one of those cases. Uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, have the speaker come forward on this, uh, Rick Hernandez, please. And you had it for street improvement, you might clarify that.
Uh, yeah, so, um, so I think I've already said where I live, uh, we walk our, so we've, we walk our kids to school every day, Seacrest, um, and, uh, I'm here on behalf of the Seacrest Safety Committee. Uh, the community, uh, Seacrest, the senior center right next to Seacrest, and some of the other members of our Lita Park, uh, got together and put together a list of recommendations that we provided to Dante and Mo. Uh, they listened to our recommendations. Uh, I'm pleased to say that, uh, without any action on your part, City Council, they went ahead and actually implemented one of those changes, which was to replace the crosswalk on the intersection of Arnold and Main. Uh, the, the key thing, though, that, uh, we wanted to comment on was, we wanted you to approve the changes that are being proposed, specific, uh, being, uh, proposed, and those changes, uh, that affect the Seacrest community is a stop sign at the intersection of Arnold and Main. This will be a big first step in improving the safety in that area. Uh, there's additional recommendations that the Seacrest Safety Committee has submitted, which may require additional capital expenditures, may require additional scheduling, and we're aware of that. Uh, we just wanted to make you aware of, uh, there's more than one request here from our community, and that there's a very dangerous situation that exists now for pedestrians, bicyclists, and even cars there. And this will go a long way to improving that, uh, and there's additional changes that, uh, we have recommended. Um, the key thing, though, is, uh, by making this change and the other changes we've recommended, it'll encourage other families to bike and walk and get more cars off the road, which I think is a big improvement for the city. And so, uh, I'd like to just thank Dante and Mo for getting some of this work prioritized and finding a way to get things done, and I think it represents the professionalism that Dante, uh, really brings to the city staff. So, thank you, guys. Please, uh, support item number 10. Thanks.
Yes, uh, council?
Um, well, I think this goes a long way from starting with, um, when we got the light at, at Poplar Beach, or, excuse me, at Poplar Street. Um, that's been huge for people to have that east-west crossing, safety-wise, and, um, especially now with our senior center. I know there's a lot, um, more action and activity there, and, um, that's great that the people of Seacrest are starting to walk more. I know that area has been, um, a lot of cars. So, um, this is one more step in our, our plans for a walkability and a safe pedestrian community. So, um, thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Entertained a motion?
Just real quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Um, the other issue, I think we've all, this runs across us, when you're on Main Street, kind of in the Seacrest Arnold area, when you're on a side street, you're trying to pull onto Main Street, the, some of the parked cars on Main Street make it really difficult to have a visual, um, path to see who's coming. And staff may want to look at, um, some of these intersections and maybe push the red line a little farther back, so as you're coming up to Main Street, you don't have to put your nose out there to see who's coming, you can actually see down Main Street. That would be a big help. Um, the one on, uh, keeping the, the zone clear in front of the more for less, there's only one little concern I have there, that's, if you don't move up when that light turns green and you leave a, a gap, the light turns red, and you're there for another hour and a half. So I would, I, I watch this, I go that way a lot. So I'd recommend, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna leave that gap, so when the light turns green, cars need to start and accelerate. We may want to talk with Caltrans and add a little bit of a delay so they can move forward and not suddenly get a red light there.
I always let people in, Alan, and I always get through.
I watch them all the time. They're nice, and they leave the gap, and all of a sudden, you start moving, and the light's red, and you're there for another two hours.
But that's okay.
I'm glad you're not in charge of traffic in Half Moon Bay. I'm glad you're not in charge of traffic in Half Moon Bay.
No kidding. You need to learn how to step on the gas.
I respectfully disagree, but I love the wording that we established that all vehicles stop. I think our lieutenant in charge back there could really appreciate that if we could establish that, because I'm not saying I haven't fudged either, but I don't think there's one of us in this room that can never say we've not stopped. And I was on a Rascadero Road the other day in Los Altos Hills, I believe, and, trust me, the sheriff was just nailing everybody rolling through that stop sign there.
It's a special California, serigorial stop.
I think this is a good improvement, and again, with the commenter, we've talked about this for a number of years. This is nothing new. So this council has talked about this for a number of years, but we've never had it official. I will tell you, and the newly elected council members can appreciate this, everyone wants a stop sign on their street, as simple as that. And we're not in charge of that, and it does take time, because otherwise, there would be stop signs on every corner of every street in America. So at least we've got some safety going here. I think it's very important, and we encourage staff to continue to do that. So, a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'm really happy, first, that we do have that stop at the intersection of Church Street and Coria's, because it's by Cunha and the library and the new soccer field. So I'm really happy, Dante, that you did get that in. So I would move to adopt resolution, amend the citywide traffic resolutions, regulations established by the City Council, Resolution Number CO5-11.
I'll second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered 5-0. Thank you, staff, for following through on these tough issues there. Now we're on to item 11. And we will go ahead with staff presentation here, and kind of a brief update on some concerns by the residents here.
Thank you, Mayor Muller, members of the City Council. My prepared remarks were more brief than what I'm about to say, but I understand that members of the public have come out of interest in this item, so I'll provide a little bit more background than I intended. This is essentially, this is an ordinance introduction to amend the city's habitat areas and water resources overlay and coastal resource area maps. This is actually a do-over of an ordinance that was originally approved by the City Council back in February and submitted to the California Coastal Commission for Certification. It came to our attention subsequent thereto that the notice of public hearing for that meeting in February was not published as required by our regulations, and so it's been re-noticed and agendized for introduction this night. These map amendments are the result of a lawsuit that was filed against the city in 2010 and a decision by the San Mateo County Superior Court in 2012, finding that the Quixote Ditch, an adjacent area, our habitat for California red-legged frog, a federally listed threatened species, and state-listed species of special concern, and for the San Francisco garter snake, federally listed and state-listed endangered species. Court also found that the Quixote Ditch is a riparian area and corridor under the city's local coastal program. In response to the decision, the city entered into a settlement agreement in 2012 pursuant to which it acknowledged these findings, and also acknowledged that previous biological reports prepared between 2005 and 2008 identified the Quixote Ditch and the adjacent property to the south, which has been referred to as the Landstra Parcel and which is owned by the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side, as protected areas. In addition, the settlement agreement specified that the nearby Caltrans mitigation site was a protected area and would be identified on these map updates, and that the city would process those to completion. The city's agreed to use its best efforts to amend its maps to identify these protected areas as sensitive habitat, and that constitutes a modification of the habitat area and water resources overlay maps, or the Howrow maps, as well as the coastal resource area maps. As I previously mentioned, this is a redo of the February 4th ordinance, excuse me. There is a modification, however, in subsequent communications with the Coastal Commission staff. Coastal Commission requested that the prior ordinance be clarified. The previous ordinance indicated that these areas likely contain or support sensitive coastal resources, and the modification is simply to specify that they contain sensitive coastal resources, and so that's a clarification. That was inadvertently not addressed in the staff report, and so an updated staff report has been drafted and has been distributed this evening for your consideration, and has also been made available to the member, to members of the public. I think the important thing to keep in mind about this is that when areas are identified in a biological report that's prepared in connection with a coastal development permit as likely to contain protected species like the California red-legged frog or the San Francisco garter snake, the city's land use regulations protect those areas and require or restrict the available uses that can be made of those protected areas. And similar protections are in place for riparian corridors. This map amendment doesn't affect the regulations that apply in these areas at all. It's the identification of those areas in prior biological reports that has that effect. This map amendment merely acknowledges the findings that those reports contain. So to the extent people may be concerned that this will somehow change what they can do to their own property nearby, it will not. The fact is that once areas are identified as protected coastal resources, then the regulations already go into effect. So that summarized the information in the report. I'm happy to respond to any council member questions or comments, but otherwise, that concludes my report.
Thank you, City Attorney. So we will be working off of the revised handout here.
That is correct.
So we have a number of cards, and why don't we hear them quickly here? First one, I believe, is Shirley Gurnett. I'm sorry, Shirley. And then be followed by Flo Driscoll.
Hello, my name is Shirley Gurnett, and unfortunately, the mayor of Pacifica took my speech. I actually wanted to thank Naomi for all the years she's been on the side of the Quixote people. I want to thank Farmer John for encouraging me, especially Mrs. Farmer John for telling me not to give up, because it isn't that I wanted to give up, but I got angry. I want to thank Mr. Alafano for coming to my home. He represented you people fabulously. He was a gentleman. He actually had a wonderful idea. We love most, 99% of us that were there agreed with him. Unfortunately, we had one dissenter. Unfortunately, we're held hostage on Quixote Avenue by this dissenter. We are tired of being held hostage. We're not asking you to pay our ransom. What we're asking you to do, Mr. Kundadi, air down that man. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Flo, please, and then followed by James Benjamin. That'll conclude the cards.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you again, Naomi, for all you've done over the years and everything that you do. It just transcends all generations. I live at 411 Quixote Avenue, adjacent to the Quixote Ditch, and I pretty much think that my question was addressed already in regards to the impact that this revision would have on anything that we've, to go forward with what we're going to do to mitigate erosion to our properties. And I believe you said that it wouldn't impact anything, it's just showing something on a map. Am I correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Attorney, would you respond? I don't think you're shuddling things around. It's a little more specific than that. Would you mind responding to the comment there?
Well, first of all, I want to be clear that there's a distinction between this and the very real erosion and flood problems that the Quixote neighbors have expressed in many meetings, both at City Hall and in front of the City Council. And they're probably aware, but just as a reminder, the council did budget $100,000 in this year's capital improvements program budget to conduct a study on the feasibility of measures to address those real concerns, and that process is underway. I understand there's a public meeting scheduled in the coming days to look over some conceptual ideas for moving forward with that project. So that's one issue, and I'm not quite certain what the other question was, but I'll be happy to respond to it. Just in response to this speaker, yes, this map amendment doesn't affect the regulations that apply in that area. It simply acknowledges existing biological conditions and features of the area that have been identified in other studies and reports.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. James Benjamin, please.
I'm James Benjamin. I live at 400 Pillar Cidos Avenue, and I appreciate the chance to speak to you on this item. First, I want to thank staff, Dante, and the others for the revisions in the staff report. They respond to a letter that I wrote, and I won't, since I assume that you have a copy, as it would be a matter of the public record. If you don't, I'd ask that my letter become a part of the public record, since I didn't see it on the table here. But the revised project goes a long way to address the concerns I had in the draft staff report. There was one item, however, that was just a matter of information in the agenda item, and that was the map that describes where the Caltrans mitigation site is. I don't think there's any dispute about what the words in our settlement agreement are. And this, again, has nothing at all to do with the parts of the agreement that pertain to the Quixote Water Course Ditch, if you like, or the Landstra Parcel. It has to do with the actual location of the Caltrans mitigation site. And since we all want to be working off the same information, I thought it would be helpful for you, some of you, I think maybe Councilmember Patric will recall, the 1996 mitigation project, but for the rest of you who may not have been active on the City Council at that time, that I would provide you with some information to help us understand what that area really is. This is a copy of the planning commission report at which the item was approved, and as you'll see, if you turn to the highlighted section, there is a map called Exhibit B that describes what the area is. This is the site map, that would be the Caltrans mitigation site, and as you can see, it covers an area that is somewhat larger than the area that's described in the LCP exhibit. So you can read through that in some more detail, and that will make it clear. In addition, I've attached the statement of work that came from that project as it was approved. And if you turn to the final page of the thing that I just handed you, there's a description of the fact that activity took place at that location throughout that area. In other words, it wasn't just down in the area that is currently the wetland. So I think, just as a matter of making sure we get as far as we can on the items that we have a shared understanding about, it's important for you to have all of the information that I was working with. I don't think this should be a surprise. This is completely consonant with the other term of our settlement agreement that describes the revegetation of the area that was used by the Coastside County Water District as a staging area. That area is, in fact, part of this. So I hope that that gives you some additional assistance. I know we're introducing the ordinance right now, but I want to be sure that we are all working off the same information. I'll close by also saying congratulations to Councilmember Patric on her years of service, and thank you to Alan for his service as well, and congratulations to Councilmember Kowalczek on his reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? It seemed like the City Attorney explained it hopefully for the betterment of all. No comments, no questions? So this is just a reintroducing of an ordinance amending. So what's the pleasure?
I would so move to reintroduction.
It's been moved in second to reintroduce the ordinance amending the city's local coastal plan correctly in that paragraph. And any further comments or discussion? If not, we have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, so ordered 5-0. And that concludes our agenda for this evening, I believe, and so we will close the meeting at this time. Thank you.[1733.65]